I'd like to call and order the regular Board of Education to adjutant special program education meeting for the next day. If you would stand please for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Proceeding roll call.
Here. That's mine. Oh, Tom. Tommy.
Here. Here.
Gabriel, is he here?
Here.
My name is Phoebe Roy. Say that again.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
We need to turn you up.
Say that one more time.
Gabriel?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so all present please. Need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. I would like to make one change though if we could, and that is to move the comments of the audience to below the presentations. I'd like to go ahead and recognize the NASA Airborne Astronomy Ambassadors before comments. There's no objections. I need a motion for approval. Powers, second. Callahan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Next item presentation, NASA Airborne Astronomy Ambassadors.
Jen Waters is going to kick that off and introduce the NASA teachers to you. So Jen, take it from there.
Thank you, Dr. DeBrey. If you all kind of want to start making your way up to the front, that would be great. We've been really, really fortunate the past three years that the school district has been able to participate in NASA's airborne astronomy ambassadors program. It's a selective process and really Anne Green is the one that discovered it and got us pretty heavily involved. All of these teachers have received or will receive some really intensive professional development. They get to travel around the United States to a NASA research facility, they get to go up in one of their planes for hands-on training, and then they bring back all of that to their classrooms for our kids. So I'm going to turn it over to Anne. Anne is K-12 science coordinator, and she's going to introduce the teachers, and then they have a small presentation. This is six of the eight that have been accepted for the program. This is Lonnie Anfield, Joe Leitner, Tom Ogil, Melissa Boke, and Wes Colwin, and Heather Anderson. So they also, the program, they go to a one-day workshop, usually it's in Denver or Las Vegas, and they're trained all day, and then they send the materials. And so all of this is paid for through NASA, and the SETI Institute is the one that runs it through NASA, and they organize everything. So this is the Sofia plane, and you'll see some more pictures of that here in a second. There we go. And this is just a little bit about the program that Jen was talking about. So like I said, all funding is through a cooperative agreement, which is pretty neat. So it includes a week-long, they call it a STEM immersion week, and they go to Palmdale, California, and they usually take one or two flights on the Sofia plane, which we'll see here again in just a second. And then they also tour NASA facilities. It's also in the middle of the San Andreas Fault, so they'll take the teachers out and look at the fault lines and the aqueducts. It's just pretty neat. They get to talk to the scientists that work there, and they're really teacher-oriented. In fact, when they built the Sofia plane, they had teachers in mind, and there's actually a workstation for teachers on there, and it's a pretty exclusive thing to get into. We're the only ones from the state to do that. So here's the plane, and this is the telescope that's in it. It's a 2.5-meter telescope weighing about 45,000 pounds. And basically what it does is it flies a little higher than a commercial airline. It's not weightless though. People think we go up and we're weightless. So they're technically stratosnobs, they're in the stratosphere. And you'll see that they do get NASA jackets if they've been on the flight. So I think Wes is going June 5th, and then Lonnie and Heather are the latest to join, and they'll be, they haven't been through all their classes. They have to take an online class, they do monthly webinars. And then after the program, by the way, they still hook them up with astrophysicists. Sometimes they'll do WebEx with pilots, so they just kind of keep them engaged, and plus they have that resource out there, you know, for just ongoing training. And so here's a group here with some other teachers. And then that's about four inches from there. We're going to do the next slide. And that's inside of Sofia. And Sofia, what they try to do is get above the water vapor, because that way they can get the infrared energy, so they can actually take pictures deeper in space than any kind of telescope on the ground. So just really kind of amazing things. So people from around, scientists from around the country will ask them to look at things, and they go through a process, and then that's your flight for the night, is whoever got awarded the bid, and that's what they shoot for that night when you look at it. So you can see the monitors where the teachers get to look, and then while during the night they'll spend up times, and they'll go talk to the telescope operators and the scientists, and they'll even go up in the cockpit, so like the, I think some of you have been like taking off and landing, they'll let them sit up in the cockpit while they're doing that and enjoying the flight, so it's pretty neat. I got to go on one flight myself, and it just so happened we were about 16 degrees south of the Arctic Circle, and I saw the aurora borealis on the plane. It was pretty amazing. So I think there's one more, or two more. And this is just the team, those telescope operators. They put a different instrument on it, and so that's another thing too, that these people train just on one instrument or the telescope, it takes a long time to learn how to do all of that. And there's just, that's the aurora that I took out of the plane window, but just some other photos from the trip. So anyway, pretty exciting program. They've done a good job. They've had to do a lot of work though, they do. It's been a lot of webinars, online classes, and it's been a pretty neat experience. Thank you. Do you have any questions for us?
I have a question. Sofia is not the weightless situation, but there is a weightless situation that you can go on, and I don't know if the teachers can, but do you get to?
So there's none at the moment, but I think that they're trying to work that up again, and they contacted the other day about maybe, they're kind of keeping us in line when they get that floating again for teachers, so hopefully.
Mr. Powell.
Have you been able to stimulate a lot of interest in the James Webb Space Telescope, its positioning in space, its deep-space probes and photos, I guess? Has there been much?
There's been a lot of interest from our kids, especially in the classrooms, and it's generated a lot of current issues in space sciences and astrophysics in general. And so we're kind of their window into the world right now with what's going on, and it's kind of opened their minds to some of the things that they have an opportunity to do in their future.
It's a big universe.
Yeah.
Are you all STEM-related teachers, or?
They're all science teachers.
Okay, cool.
Yeah. One of the things I loved about the program is that the curriculum that they teach the teachers is what's going on now in astronomy. So it's all current, real-world things that they have, and the teachers can talk more about that, but it's a pretty neat curriculum that they have. And they also supply all the supplies for it too. They just mailed it to the teachers. I think they just mailed it to your homes, didn't they?
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
So if NASA opened up the program again where they take a teacher in a space, who's up for that? Thank you. It's a very exciting program, and we're very, very glad that you're able to represent Fort Sumal with that program. Thank you very much for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you for supporting us. Hey Heather, someone wants to take a photo. Let's get back to the podium, but.
You want to swish?
Nope, we're good. Yep. Go ahead. Want to, Dr. DeBrey?
I just got some plaques for you. Go ahead and take your pictures.
Three, two. All right, thanks guys.
You got some remembrances of tonight, guys?
I can bring that to you.
Yeah. Give that to Anne. Joe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks guys, thanks for being here, we appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
All right, time for comments from the audience. We have a few tonight. Heather Mudd, if you'd like to come forward again.
Last month I asked you to add an agenda item for this meeting to create a parent-community advisory committee to address bullying in our schools. I spoke specifically with Mr. Emmons and Mr. Callahan about it since that meeting. I've heard nothing from any of the rest of you, Dr. DeBrey, or any member of the administration. Nothing, just radio silence. I am not going to go away, and I'm not going to accept the statement that the leader in me and the PPI programs are enough to fix bullying in our schools. I ask you again to please create this committee. I know other parents here tonight are asking for a committee on diversity and inclusion. I support that request, but respectfully remind you that these are not the same thing. I sent you 60 slides last month about bullying situations in our school. What I didn't tell you at that time is that there were more than 150 stories that were submitted to me by parents. I deleted anything that seemed similar, so that it wouldn't look like I was just telling you the same thing over and over again. More than 150 parents contacted me prior to last month. Since then, I've heard from about 30 more parents and staff members who believe that bullying is a terrible problem in our schools. In case you didn't hear, this week, a middle school student in Kansas City lost his life in an incident that originated in bullying. I know for a fact that the bully boxes in West Middle School are located in the library, which means that first of all, librarians are tasked with checking the bully boxes, which is ridiculous. Second, it means that if you are a child being bullied at West Middle and you want to report it, everyone else that's in the library with you is going to see you go and do it. I ask that you immediately initiate a program where children with Chromebooks, which is all our middle school and high school students, can report bullying incidents directly to someone at central office, that we not use ridiculously outdated bully box with pieces of paper. Please don't tell me that you're already doing enough. I know that is not the truth. I know that there are at least 10 families in this district who are planning to send their children to private school next year because they've had enough of bullying in our schools. I ask for the following. Immediately add an agenda item for the May board meeting to appoint a committee of parents, local leaders, teachers, and other stakeholders to start to gather information on the level of bullying in our schools. Create an electronic bullying report system that reports to central office. Maintain data on the bullying incidents in the schools and provide it to interested parties. Collect data from kids at the middle school and high school levels, at least, about their experiences with bullying in the district. I support the request for a committee on diversity and inclusion, but please know that my ask is not a duplication. Please give parents in the district a chance to help work towards solutions and be able to support our staff, teachers, and students. Thank you.
Thank you very much, members of the Board of Education. My name is Arne C. A.C. Dinoff, school board education and local advocate. I am also very disturbed that a parent came up here for something that's bothering her and really affecting her family without any response from school district administrators or any outreach from any elected official in the support of education. That's really shameful, really hurtful to me personally. That parent took their time out of their schedule, and it really is bothering their family, that they felt that it was important, that they've come up here a number of months asking the support of education to place their item of agenda of bullying and discrimination on the school board agenda. Why won't you accommodate that? What are you afraid of? What are you trying to cover up, and what are you trying to hide? There is some good news on the front. There is state legislation by Representative Basie of Boone County, Columbia, and it's important on his bill, number one, he's going to pass a bill that will allow parents in the community to place items on the school board, and the school board has two months, is mandated by two months, to place it on the agenda, and it's moving very fast through the legislature. Also, there's from Representative Basie, is a recall provision for school board members who don't perform their duties as prescribed by law. And Richard West from New Melly, who's a state representative right here in St. Charles County, he has House Bill 2575, which will allow five minutes of speaking time of each and every resident, and you can't limit free speech. And I applaud these representatives for doing the right thing and bringing back transparency, honesty, and accountability of residents to be able to testify before you. You know, it's important to us that we come up here and tell the issues, but yet we don't get any feedback from you, and you keep hiding these issues. On the agenda tonight is an architect, William B. Itner, and I really want you to put the brakes on any new projects right now because of the cost of inflation, the cost of labor, the cost of building materials. Let's not get in the same boat as Francis Howe School District, where the new high school at North, Francis Howe North High School, is costing double or 60% more than the original cost. And I also have some questions about ties of this architect to the district and the construction staff of the district. And I really don't think that the competitive fairness was a really good bid. Now, you can choose and negotiate with them in professional services, but I feel that this is an insider trading deal, and I really think that there needs to be some scrutiny and debate by the Board of Education. I would also like to make sure that the professional agreement with the Fort Sumal Teachers Association, that they're given a fair salary in terms of salary and benefits, and I'll sum it up real quick. Congratulations to Jeff Marion and John Christopher, and thank you for your service, Mrs. Swerengin and Mr. Emmons, we appreciate it. And we have a new leadership ability here tonight, and I would like to see some new leadership at the Board of Education. I'd recommend that the President be Jeff Marion, as he's a former superintendent, and the Vice President be Gabriel Helms. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Good evening, Dr. DeBrey, members of the Board. Tonight I'd like to talk to you about some shortcomings in our policies at the high school level. Various policies exist throughout the district to make sure students and staff are provided a safe environment for learning. These policies are not perfect. When they are implemented, there inevitably are shortcomings that are identified. These shortcomings that exist district-wide and at all grade levels should be addressed and remedied going forward. Policy JGR states the following in part. The school district is committed to providing an environment free from intimidating, hostile, offensive behavior, verbal or physical conduct, or communication constituting sexual harassment. One example of this occurred just last Wednesday at one of our high schools. During a lesson, a teacher went up to a specific student, we will call her Suzie for the purpose of anonymity, and asked something to the effect of, "Can I call you something nasty?" In another class, a teacher said, "Can I use you for an example?" It is assumed this was done to illustrate what the teacher was teaching. After asking the student if they could do so, the teacher asked the class, "What if I called Suzie a whore or a slut?" Other students in other periods were used as examples in a similar way, using only the word whore. The use of these words has been corroborated by more than one student, and was also relayed by a different teacher in the district to another teacher. It is alleged, though not confirmed, that the word, oh, sorry. It is alleged, though not confirmed, that in yet another class, the word, the N-word, was used. Regardless of what word was used, the context of the lesson was such that a defamatory statement that meets the definition of sexual harassment was made in an attempt to drive home the lesson. This doesn't mean it's okay. It's not. We need to be better moving forward. To be clear, I don't think there was any malice behind it, and it was done truly to illustrate the lesson. But it doesn't mean it's okay. It's not. The teacher was pulled out of the class the next day, and Friday through today, the class has had a sub. From what I've been able to discern of the policy, the teacher should be suspended for five days, although the policy isn't written for staff. This is not the first such incident with staff that has occurred in our district this year. In both cases that I'm aware of, the parents weren't notified. In this case, as of today, more than a week after the incident occurred, the parents still have not been notified, nor have the students been told anything about what happened. We talk a lot about the need for more transparency within this district. Going forward, I would like to see this policy adjusted to include that the parents will be notified, and in addition, a counselor will follow up with the students involved in the incident to make sure they are okay after having witnessed it, sort of a debriefing, if you will. Students do tell their parents things, so some parents will find out, but it would be nice to have the actual details of the incident from the district and not hearsay, so that parents can discuss it with their students and the rumor mill isn't ramped up. I guarantee you what circulates in the rumor mill is not what actually happened, as things get distorted. This is just one example of shortcomings in our district policies that you will hear about tonight. To further our efforts, we collectively would like to ask that a committee be formed to specifically address the shortcomings of our policies and guidelines, as well as further develop our diversity and inclusion efforts. This committee will work to create an environment where all people feel safe to be their authentic self, unashamedly knowing that a community thrives when all children have the freedom to pursue their dreams. Such a committee must be representative of our communities and schools with input from multiple individuals at various levels of our district. The people that this committee will be dedicated to protecting and representing will include individuals from all marginalized groups. This committee will make recommendations to the board and provide guidance as often as possible. We would also like to request this be added to the agenda for May's board meeting.
Good evening, Dr. DeBrey and members of the Board. My name is Adeline Williams, and I'm a parent of two elementary-age children in the district. You just heard a fellow parent share recent events within our district at the high school level. I'm here to provide you another rare example, this time at the elementary level and specifically relating to race. Last summer, my fourth grader attended STEAM camp through the district. I believe another parent contacted you all via email about this same incident. During the STEAM camp while in the classroom, a white classmate called a black classmate the N-word for many students in the classroom to hear. This was a clear racial slur directed by a student to another student right in the middle of class. My child came home to me at the end of the day and told me all about it and how the student who said the racial slur was removed from the classroom immediately after it occurred. However, when I asked her if anything was discussed as a class about what had happened, she told me there wasn't any discussion. Parents of the students in the class were also never informed about what occurred. I reached out to the principal and was told that the issue was swiftly addressed through the rule of the student from the summer camp program. However, when I asked about what kind of dialogue was had with the students who bore witness to this racially motivated slur, no answer was provided, aside from the principal agreeing that things need to change. In this real example of racism in one of our very own elementary schools, we were presented with a teachable moment. This teachable moment was missed, a missed opportunity for our young students to ask questions to try to understand and unpack what they had just witnessed. I believe that our teachers need to be equipped with the right support to engage our students after they witness something as abhorrent as a racial slur in school, where they should feel safe. Counselor support needs to be available in the classroom, and parents need to be notified. Diversity is to be celebrated and discussed, not avoided. Inclusion involves accepting that we are a diverse community made up of people from all walks of life. We are doing a major disservice to our kids and our community by brushing these incidents under a rug not to be discussed. The same can be said about the situation at the high school that was just described in the speech before me. The same can also be said when another fellow parent has come to this very podium in recent board meetings and shared her painful truth about the N-word being said to her child within our school walls. These are not isolated incidents, and it is a disservice to ignore them as a community. We are missing opportunities for our students to grow and to learn how to be kinder human beings. We, as your stakeholders, will continue to share with you all of these missed opportunities for our children to feel safe from discrimination until policies can be changed to reflect an inclusive and safe environment for all. Several parents, including myself, have spoken with a diversity specialist, Mr. Warren Wilson, about this in recent months. We are very ready to support any efforts to address the issue of discrimination at Fort Sumal. I would like to request that a diversity committee be formed to specifically address the shortcomings in our policies and guidelines, as well as further promote the need for inclusion for all of our students. Please consider these real-life examples and add this request for your committee to be added to the agenda at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Catherine Byrd, and I have three children in the district. I came to you last month because Ms. Leah Burnett's son's story is still not getting the attention it deserves. Her son was called a racial slur, and the incident wasn't even properly investigated. The two women before me have shared stories of degrading your racist language used at the high school level, middle school level, and elementary school level. Now I am going to share my family's first encounter with racial slurs, or with racial issues in our school district, which happened at the kindergarten level. My eldest daughter was in kindergarten, so I would meet her at the bus stop to walk her home. This crisp fall day, I could tell something was off as soon as she got off the bus. She didn't have the happy spark in her eye, nor the normal bounce in her step. I kept asking her if everything was okay, but she didn't speak much on her short walk home. However, once we went inside our home and closed the door, she collapsed in my arms. I felt the weight of her world on her shoulders as she began to weep. My five-year-old was crying from a deep pain that I could not see. I did my best to hold back my own tears and begged her to tell me, "Baby, what's wrong?" All she could cry out was, "I just wanted to be orange." I just wanted to be orange, again and again. My mind was racing, I couldn't understand what was going on. I used some calming techniques I've learned over the years, helped her control her breathing, walked her through the steps of grounding herself a bit after something that has clearly hurt her to her core. Once she felt a bit settled, I asked her if I could ask her some questions about what happened. She agreed, and I learned that her class had self-portraits at school that day. The rest of the class was coloring themselves pink. She didn't see herself as pink because she has a brown dad. She saw herself as a mix of pink her mom and brown her dad, and she thought orange was the best color of that combination. She wanted to color herself as orange. A little boy had a problem with it. A little boy wanted her to color herself pink like everyone else in the class. A little boy argued with her, telling her she had to be pink, she couldn't be orange, again and again and again. It may not seem like a big deal, but my daughter had to stand up for her own race in one of your classrooms, and it made her come home and weep in my arms. We are having racial issues in our schools, and we're in this grade as far down as kindergarten. Combine my personal experience with those shared by other moms before me, and it's clear we have reached a critical level where race has become a concern. Luckily, my specific situation might have an easy preventative method the school could quickly implement. There are a series of crayons, markers and colored pencils that are created to show a beautiful variety of skin tones. Please see the boxes that were just passed to you, hopefully, okay? We could put these in our classrooms to show how we celebrate the beautiful diversity that is in our schools and community. This is only one idea, but there are many, many others that could help the environment in our schools. To further our efforts and help develop such ideas, we ask that a committee be formed to specifically address the shortcomings of our policies and guidelines, as well as further develop our inclusion efforts. The community work to create an environment where people feel safe to be their authentic self, unashamedly knowing that a community thrives when all children have the freedom to pursue their dreams. Please, an individual sent an email to you all just before this meeting with an example of what this committee could look like. Please consider this example and add the request for this committee for diversity and inclusion to the next board's meeting. We want to help you create the positive and safe learning environment that the Fort Sumal mission statement promises for all. We can do this, but we must be intentional with our efforts. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to helping any way that I can.
My name is Leah Burnett. I'm sure you all are tired of seeing me, and I'm tired of being here. I'm here today again just wanting to address the topic of racism. I'm baffled at the lack of attention that all of you all are showing as the parents are coming up here talking about these issues. I'm looking at your facial expressions, at your body, there's no empathy, there's no concern, so some would probably say this is a waste of time, but it's not a waste of my time. So some would probably say this is a waste of time, but it's not a waste of my time because this is my children that I'm coming up here begging and pleading for. I was extremely hopeful that the topic of racism would be added to the agenda for this board meeting. I just knew it would be there. I've been, this is my third month here, and it's not, it's not on the agenda. And that further proves that your black student population does not matter to you. I've talked to a few of your board members personally, and nothing has happened since then. You have, and again, are proving that your black student population does not matter. I'm asking again that you add how Fort Zumwalt South will address the matter of racism and keeping your children of color safe to the next agenda. Please. Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak with you tonight about your decision last month to table the vote on the certified tentative agreement. I felt that there were some more things that I'd like to share with you that I was not able to when I was answering your questions last month. As a president of FCEA and the person that represents people when we go to negotiations, I just want to let the board know that as the recognized exclusive and sole negotiation agent for regularly-employed certified personnel, FCEA is committed to the win-win negotiation process. FCEA goes above and beyond to include the priorities of our entire bargaining unit when we are preparing for negotiations. The people that sit on the team spend countless hours going through information, looking through information and concerns that our entire bargaining unit present to us, and we take it very seriously when we are tasked to negotiate for all. Additionally, the majority of education associations across this region do not include non-members in their informal surveys, and we do. Even fewer of the associations across the region allow non-members to vote in any capacity, not even in advisory capacity. FCEA team members for negotiations this year poured their heart into that, and we were not there just to represent ourselves, we were there to represent the entire bargaining unit. We came in bargaining good faith, and if there were questions, concerns, that the Board of Education had, it disappoints me that those were not brought up during the negotiation process. Thank you.
Good evening. So, good evening, members of the board. As you can see, there's lots of teachers out here in the audience today. I just want to take some time to address what happened on March 21st in regards to the board's action to table the approval of the new salary schedule for teachers. As Ms. Buckner has already stated, per our professional agreement signed by both the Board of Education as well as FCEA, you have recognized that FCEA is the association that has exclusive sole negotiation power with the Board of Education in regards to any issues regarding certified staff, with the exception of administrators and supervisors. Acting in good faith, FCEA surveyed all certified members of the district and received a staggering 69% response rate from all staff members. This included non-members as well as members of FCEA, and we asked questions in regards to the calendar and salary preferences. This information was in return analyzed and used to drive our negotiations at the table. Unfortunately, the same cannot be said for the board. At no time was the staff surveyed prior to negotiations. In fact, it was simply an afterthought. As a teacher, I expect more, and I need more. I love our district, I love what I do, and I'm tired pouring my heart into my profession each and every day to have it disregarded by the very people who should see to it that my livelihood is sustained. The community is concerned about learning loss in the classroom environment of our students, but these things impact staff, too. Teachers today are spending more and more time away from their families to help children in our classrooms fill those learning gaps. We spend hundreds of dollars out of our own pockets researching, creating, and purchasing adapted materials, because, let's face it, $200 in classroom supplies doesn't go very far. In fact, that is 75 cents per student for a high school teacher. We work in classrooms with persistent HVAC issues even after new units are installed. When we complain, we're told there is no problem, or it's working like it should. We have students begging for paper pencil tasks but are getting ready to be tracked via access cards on how many copies we make. Teachers in the district deserve to have our voices heard and respected. When dismissing our voice, FCEA, you are in essence saying we don't matter. Please take a vote today, do what is right for the entire community, and restore a negotiation arrangement that means something. Thank you.
My name is Nanette Trapp. I serve as vice president for certified staff for FCEA. I just want to also reiterate how much FCEA takes to heart the responsibility that we are tasked with when asked to sit on negotiations. I think on both the part of the district and FCEA, this has been a source of pride. Every time when negotiations begin, many of you have sat in the room and listened to the history of how that process began, and I think that it is really significant that we have historically had a very collective and collaborative process. But that depends on trust, and that's a fragile thing. I think a lot of teachers right now are feeling that their voice has not been heard, their work has not been recognized. It's been said on social media and in email responses that FCEA needs to do better, but I think we need to really ask better by who. Because for our students and their families, teachers are spending days and nights working tirelessly. We could not be more concerned with ensuring that all of our students receive the high-quality education that they deserve. For our friends and our colleagues, regardless of their membership status, we are working to improve the pay, the working conditions, and the access to benefits for everyone. Before beginning, we asked all of the staff who will be part of this negotiations to give us the input. We had an extremely high rate of response, and we read all of them. There was no parsing out responses between members and non-members. We're always very mindful of the needs of all of these people because these are our friends, these are the people that we work with every day, these are the people who support us in making the education for our students successful. For the Board of Education and for the administration, through an extremely trying and taxing past couple of years, all teachers and staff have shown up for our kids. The workload of teachers has nearly doubled to make sure that all students have access to the curriculum in meaningful ways, regardless of whether or not they can be seated in a classroom. We have reached new limits of creativity with no additional time or money. Teachers have improved the outcomes of our student learning at a rate that outpaced most other districts in the state. They have shown up in every way imaginable. We have been honest, we have been concerned with the needs of all of the stakeholders who attend our schools. We're very aware that the issues that face the district are real. We need that reciprocated to know that the issues facing teachers are real as well. We've been diligent and supportive of each other. So as you vote tonight, I really ask you to be cognizant of the level of engagement and the real impacts on the lives of teachers and other staff who may not get a raise if this agreement is not approved. So, thank you.
Thank you, Nanette. Mr. Thorwood, consent agenda. I need a motion to approve.
Need for approval.
Callahan, second, please. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Financial reports. Mr. Rourke.
Good evening, members of the board. In your packet, you have the monthly financial reports, which include the financial statement, investment schedule, revenue, expenditure, accounts payable. I'd like to direct your attention to the financial summary, which we've also had for a few days now. Monthly fund balances for March totaled $108,895,289.20. Of that balance, $109,306,590.46 was invested. You'll note that that's higher than our cash balance, and that's because we have a considerable amount of outstanding checks that are sitting in the drawer waiting for your approval tonight before we can release them. So that's how we can have more invested than we actually have in our balances. The current weighted average yield on our district investments is .24% as of March. We are starting to see a slight uptick. I want to point out that in my memo here, I put Fed raised rates to .5, it actually was .25%. So we are starting to see somewhat of an improvement in our returns, not a lot, and it'll be a while before it gets up to where it had been before COVID hit, for sure. Monthly revenues totaled $15,238,920.16. This is pretty typical. For March revenues for the month, local revenues totaled $3.5 million, state $9.2, and federal $2.6. Year-to-date, we are running behind last year, but that's really because last year's revenues were inflated by $11 million because of the debt refinancing. If we exclude that transaction, overall, our revenue has increased about $5.4 million when compared to last year for our operating funds. Most of that is driven by local revenues, which is up actually 6.4, offset by some negative state, which is just a lag behind in payments. I think we're in pretty good shape right now. Prop C continues to run ahead, and we think they're going to, the legislature will have a supplemental appropriation, so we should be able to add to the budget here next month when I bring that back to you. That'd be nice. Monthly expenses totaled $18,799,509.25. For the month of March, salaries totaled $12 million, benefits 4.1, purchase services 1.3, supplies 1.1, and capital projects 300,000. And as I noted in the revenue, our expenses from the prior year were actually inflated as well because of that debt refinancing. Also, we had more bond reserves last year, that we had a lot more projects going on. We're winding down now. We're very happy that the bond issue did pass, so we can continue on with, give Lisa some money to spend because we have a lot of work that we need to do. Year-to-date expenses, like I said, are $18.9 million lower when compared to last year, and a large portion of that was because of capital projects we had last year, and a lot of it was that debt refinancing that did play to the prior year. Salaries are really flat. We've had less extra passion duty this year, we had less sick leave and severance payouts, and we have quite a few still unfilled vacancies, which are also keeping our salaries depressed right now. Benefits are also down. I would point out that because of the fewer salaries that were, where salaries are flat, benefits include our payroll taxes, they also include retirement, so those are also running behind last year, as well as partially because of elimination of some of the board-paid retiree insurance as well as part of that reduction. Right now, our supply costs are running ahead, we have quite a few inflation-sensitive items such as food, electricity, propane, natural gas, diesel, those are all running a lot higher than expected, and I'm sure we're going to have to do some budget adjustments coming up next month for those. Does anybody have any questions on the financial reports?
Any questions for Mr. Rourke? Now, I need a motion to approve the financial reports as presented. Callahan, second. Ours, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Old business. Dr. DeBrey.
The only item we have under old business is to, for the board to consider the professional agreement, proposed professional agreement for 2022-2023. That was proposed at the last meeting. You asked to have some input from the entire teaching staff. We did run a Survey Monkey and found that we had 62% that gave us indications that they thought the salary agreement was either somewhat favorable or favorable. There was another 15% that were neutral on the matter. About 23% thought it was unfavorable or somewhat unfavorable. So clearly, the staff, and it was 916 members that voted, saying 62% was either somewhat favorable or favorable. So if you're so inclined, what you would need to do is first vote to untable the item, and then it would be a vote to approve it at that time. And that's our proposed 2022-2023 salary agreement. It's about 2.75% additional money being spent this coming year over what we spent this past year, which was about $2.5 million. So I think we did a good job in the negotiation. I felt like both the staff and the board felt pretty good about it, but you wanted to know what the rest of the staff felt about it, that's the information I've given you now. 916 staff members, 62% either somewhat favorable or favorable.
So I'd like to just say something real quick, just for the benefit of the educators in the room. There was no intention of us damaging the win-win situation or the way you negotiate. I believe, personally, I believe the negotiations are sound. The speakers here tonight just stood here and told us that you're concerned that you're not heard, and I believe that that was really the action of the board last month, was to hear all the teachers. I understand, we understand that the FCEA is the sole negotiating body, and we negotiate with you. But I think that if we don't, sometimes we have to make difficult decisions that aren't popular, but at the same time, we were asking too last month just to tell us who, how many voted, how many were represented, and we didn't get that number, so that's why we felt like we needed to do that. That's not what we chose to do, to harm anybody. We just don't want to disenfranchise all of the teachers, all of our staff. We want to be able to say that you're representing everybody. And you may do that, that wasn't what we thought we saw last month, so that's why we tabled it. We were not negating the fact that there was any hard work done. So with that, I want to make a motion to untable this so that we can discuss the negotiation. Mr. Evans, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, so, thank you. Sorry, Mr. Evans, I forget you're up there. So there is a motion then that you need to take to approve the 2022-2023 professional agreement with the FCEA. I need a motion. Mr. Moore, second.
Ours.
Ours, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So. Business, Dr. DeBrey.
First item under new business is a recommendation for the district architect for the first phase of our $125 million bond issue. We're recommending that we sell to our financial advisor $55 million. The first projects will be the safe rooms at the elementary schools, roof repairs, interior repairs, upgrades, things like that. We will be replacing some HVAC units, but we need to get going right away because there's usually three to four months' worth of design on any big project before you ever even get to bidding it. So we believe, we checked around with the school districts in St. Charles County with the architects they're using on their projects. We asked William B. Itner to give us some idea of what they would perform to work for. They have. We've used them on the Clement Center, the building addition at Flynn Hill, we've used them at the Professional Development Center, and also the Early Childhood Center, and they've always done us a really credible job. Lisa has a memo that she included in the agenda. Lisa, do you have any other comments from what I said?
No, we've covered it all. I really like working with them.
You didn't mean to do that.
Yeah, no, I really like working with them. They're very well to work with.
So, question I have is, Itner, did they, were they involved in the planning, the architecture, the work that was done on the tornado rooms that we have at Flynn Hill?
Yes, yes.
So they already pretty much have a plan, they know, so it's not going to be reinventing the wheel?
Correct, correct.
And again, it's just for the first phase at this point. We'll come back later with the second phase.
Okay. Any other questions for Lisa or Dr. DeBrey? I need a motion to approve the recommendation for the district architect.
Move for approval.
Callahan, second.
Ours.
Ours, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Got it. All opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board application that Laura has prepared. Next item is the Developmental Disabilities Resource Board application that Laura has prepared. There's funds they provide us for various activities, so I'd like her to address that.
Yes, thank you. Provided in your packet, you have an application fund, or an application for funds from DDRB for up to twenty thousand dollars that could be requested to support the childcare needs of students who will qualify for funds from the DDRB. So with your consent, we would be allowed to apply for those funds and then ask for them if needed.
This is something we do year after year, so I need a motion to approve. Powers, second. Moore, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Next item.
Next item is from Jeff Orr, and it's to issue purchase orders on next year's budget. Jeff?
So members of the board, I'm asking for permission, and it's very timely this year, as everybody knows, there's a big delay in a lot of things we order and when we get those. So we've actually had to back up a lot of orders this year several months in advance, just so we can get the things that we need sooner or by the beginning of the school year. So I'm asking for permission to, we, we created the next year's file set, so I will load this year's current budget in there, since it's been, what's been approved by the board, and allow our buildings to start placing purchase orders. We won't approve a lot of those until next month or so, but we'll look at things that require a large lead time, and I've had some buildings already contact me about some things that they want to try and get ordered now, so they can try and have them before school gets here. That's why I'm asking for your permission. We will not, we're at, we, we always, when we order things, make sure they won't be delivered before July first, and then we won't pay for anything until after July first. So it will actually come out of next year's budget. I'm asking for permission to do that.
Any questions for Mr. Moore? If not, I need a motion to approve the request to issue purchase orders on next year's budget. Moore, sorry, second. Powers, all in favor, say aye. Motion carries. Next item.
Next item is to approve the unofficial election results from the April fifth general election. And the reason we're doing that is Fort Zumwalt is considered an urban school district, and as such, state law requires that the board reorganize and approve the unofficial election results within ten days of the election. If we waited until Monday, we would be outside that timeframe. So that's why we're here. Just to review for you, on April fifth, we passed a one hundred twenty-five million dollar bond issue that will not increase taxes with almost sixty-eight percent of the vote, which is rewarding, for sure. And that will be spending over six to nine years, so there's going to be a great many different projects come out of that, including a swimming pool down the road, so we're really excited about that. We had two individuals elected to the, the school board. John Christopher was a top vote getter at three thousand six hundred and sixty. Jeff Marion, second, three thousand six hundred and thirty. So between the two of them, that's thirty-four percent of the vote. And it was, those are the guys elected. So I would like to recommend the school board to approve these unofficial results. I will bring the, the final results to the next board meeting, so you can do that. But this is the results that we had on April fifth.
Need a motion to approve the unofficial election results. Thank you, Mr. Callahan. I'm going to miss that. Second by Mr. Emmons. All in favor, say aye. Motion carries. For the next item, before we do that, I'm going to break protocol and ask Mr. Emmons if you, because we never get to say, the people that are going on before you adjourn Cindy, you never really get to say anything final. So I'm going to ask you to say your final words before we adjourn Cindy. You weren't ready for that.
You called me a card this time. I knew I would have directed that to Mr. Christopher, Mr. Marion, because it's a great district. It's an honor to have served this seat for our community, and it's an honor to give it over to you, to both of you, that you can take it forward. Like I said before, so when I got elected, we're just stewards of this seat. This is our seat, so celebrate both of you in what you're about to do. So thank you very much for, for doing this.
Thank you, sir. And I just want to also just emphasize how much I personally have poured a lot of my life into this. Just absolutely love this district. I went to school here in first grade through twelfth grade, graduated all three of my kids here, and just absolutely love every one of you that are employed at Fort Zumwalt. Whether you agree with me or not, most of the time, I, I try to do everything, all my decisions have always been based in the best interest of our kids and our stakeholders. Again, you may or may not agree with that, but that's where my heart is, so I do appreciate you, and all of you at this table too, and all of our administrators throughout the district. And to this board, thank you very much for allowing us to serve together. It's been fun. So with that, I need a motion for this board to adjourn Cindy for the reorganization of the Board of Education. Mr. Moore, second. Mr. Powers, all in favor, say aye.
Okay, Jeff and John, if you guys will come up here and be sworn in. You get close to the scene, that won't happen. We're going to get sworn in.
We're ready to take over.
Don't leave, Tom, or Mike. Move around. Jamie is our board secretary, and she will administer the oath of office to you guys.
Alrighty. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of Missouri
and the Constitution of the State of Missouri
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
and that I will faithfully and impartially discharge
the duties of member of Board of Education in and for Fort Zumwalt School District
the duties of a member of Board of Education in and for Fort Zumwalt School District
county of St. Charles, state of Missouri
county of St. Charles, state of Missouri
to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
to the best of my ability, according to law, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. And I need Tom and Mike to come here if they would. First of all, it's always interesting when boards change, and since I've been here as long as I have, you can't imagine how many board members I have been here. My first board was Cindy Ossman, Karen Jones, Ron Jeffries, John Welch, Carolyn Coffey, and Nancy Kinnate.
How do you remember them?
They've all been burned in my brain. So they were really, they were the ones that hired me, and they, they were really wonderful people. We only had six members back then. We didn't go to seven until about nine, middle nineties, ninety-five, something like that. But I do remember them. I remember them all. I'll, I'll be able to remember them probably till the day I die. But the boards all, always do what is right by kids in their own minds. So there are times that maybe we disagree, but you can't ever quarrel with their intent. And we have a little remembrance for Tom Emmons. He served with this last term, only been with us for three years. But he's made people think, for sure, about things. And I just wanted to, to thank him for being with us for these three years. I have another one for Mike Swerengem. Nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand twenty-two. Can you imagine?
I never thought of it when I started, no.
Yeah. Think, think about all the buildings since nineteen ninety-nine. Fourteen buildings. Hundreds of millions of dollars in bond issues. So he, Mike has really been a part of this school district. When he says he's spent a lot of his life here, I mean, over twenty-one years, it's a long time. And there's, there's a lot of projects and curriculum changes and things that he has been integrally involved with. And when you look at where our district is today, from where we've come, Mike deserves a lot of that credit. Our curriculum, our test scores, our, our image in the state is remarkably different from when it was in nineteen ninety-nine. So that's why, I know it is, but I'm giving you some credit right now. Can we get pictures?
Can I get one official picture?
Yeah, come on. One more, Mike.
You don't need those anymore, right?
Holy cow!
That's gotta be a heck of a picture.
Thank you.
Right, thanks, guys. Okay, the next order of business is for me to serve as temporary chairman and elect the president of the board for the next year, and then we'll turn it over to the president for the election of the vice president. So I'd like to open nominations for the president of the Board of Education. Nominate Erica.
I'll second.
Gabriel, second.
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, nomination of Erica Powers by Tommy George, seconded by Gabriel Helm, and the other nominations. I would entertain a motion to elect Erica Powers as president by acclamation. Motion by, second by Tommy. All in favor, say aye. Any votes? All right, we got a new president.
Right, so we have open votes up for our vice president.
I'd like to nominate John Callahan for his years of service.
I'll second that one.
And he will be retiring, I understand it, so. Be a nice send-off for it.
Any other nominees?
Yeah, we need to, I would just see if there's a motion, second, to elect John Callahan as vice president by acclamation.
All right, a motion to elect John Callahan as vice president by motion of acclamation. Great.
I'm sorry, give me a second.
All in favor, say aye.
Very good.
Comments from the board. Start with you, Gray.
First of all, I'm a little jealous with the NASA thing, like that's I wrote wow on my notes. That's such a great opportunity, great opportunity for, for Zumwalt to be represented by, what I can only probably just guess is another group of outstanding teachers representing our state and our city and our, and our district. That's just, that was a great opportunity. You know, I just, I made a note here. I often make notes as, as we're talking, and a lot of great points that, that were made tonight, and, and things that, a lot of great suggestions and things that we, we do need to look into. And, you know, we may not always agree, and I, I may have said this before, we may not always agree. We may not always get along, but one thing's for sure is that you guys make us better, and, and we do get better as time goes on, as we keep pushing each other to be better. And I, I personally do appreciate that, I really do. And I'd like to, again, thank Mr. Swerengem, Mr. Emmons for their years of service in this board. It's been, it's been an honor to serve with them through some very, very unprecedented, unexpected times over the last few years. And congratulate them on their service, and it's been an honor, and we like to welcome the new members on the board, and we look forward to working with you guys and, and doing some more great things through the years, so.
First thing I want to say is this is an honor to be part of this fine group. I think that you guys have done great work over the years, been great stewards for the district as a board, and Dr. DeBrey. Said this many times throughout the campaign, Zumwalt's my family, this is my home. I've been here since nineteen sixty-eight, and went first grade all the way through. So it is important to me, investing in the area, and I will do everything I can to create, to help Zumwalt continue to be the great district that it is. And thanks for all the support, and appreciate you.
Thank you. I'd like to reiterate what John says. Truly an honor, and I want to appreciate, or thank and appreciate everything that kind words folks have expressed since we've been elected and even before. And I just hope to do my very, very best for the district. And I do want to say something, because I think it's, the board's in a tough situation, because policies don't allow us to respond when there are open comments. And I want you to know from me, and I know I can, I mean, I don't know these folks very well, but if they're like me, please don't ever misinterpret that on my part as not caring or not listening, because that's just simply not going to be the case. So sometimes we're hamstrung by some of our own policies, but I just want to make sure I make that point, you know. This is a board that I know and look forward to listening and working with everyone, with the district leaders, Dr. DeBrey's leadership, the folks at the table, and all of you and all the parents and students. We're all in this together. We share the same common goals, so I think together we can do great things, so thanks for having me.
Thanks for the crayons. Those are pretty nifty. I'd like to see about getting some more of those and getting them passed out. The people that came up and talked, we, we are listening. We may have not gotten the ball rolling like we want to, but we don't condone bullying, we don't condone violence, we don't condone any type of discrimination all across the board, and we're going to get that rolling and improve in, in that area. The teachers, I want to thank you. You guys are doing it every day, and I know how hard it is, because my wife is an instructor. So just know that you guys are appreciated, and I really do need that.
Gabriel?
Yeah. First, I'd like to say congrats to the NASA Airborne Astronomy Ambassador. I hope I said that right. So I think that's really a big deal and a big feat. I think that's great for our district. I think there's great exposure for our teachers and students as well. Thank you to the speakers, and just to reiterate what the other people said on the board, it's not that we're not listening. I, I, I think that Jeff used a great analogy about us being hamstrung by some of our own policies. So don't ever feel like you're not being heard, because you are. We just can't respond in that particular moment. Thank you, Lisa, Laura. Laura, and Jeff, for all you do, especially Laura, that extra money for those, you know, for those families who can't afford that, that's big, you know. And I think that without that, I think our, it kind of takes away from how wonderful that Early Childhood Center is, and I think that's phenomenal. Congrats to Jeff and John. Great to have you. You know, definitely looking forward to continue working, you know, working on progress. And speaking of progress, just to reiterate what Tommy George said, you know, it's gotten, things have gotten the way they are over a matter of decades, as far as being antiquated in the areas that we are. So it's not going to happen overnight. You know, it's not going to happen tomorrow, it's not going to happen next week. Won't happen next year, but it's going to happen over time and over continuous progress. So I just ask that parents and teachers and students be patient. We're working on it. You know, it's still a work in progress. We're a continuous work in progress, because life has changed, and society changes every day, and we're just trying to keep up. And keep ourselves as best of a district as we can be in the meantime. Other than that, that's all. So thank you all for coming tonight. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be there, but I'm looking forward to next, to next month's meeting, where I can meet you, Jeff and John, personally shake your hand and welcome you, you know, personally.
Change the board policies.
Mr. Callahan?
Thank you. I have, I have one comment related to the bond issue on Proposition Four of the twenty-seven precincts that are available to vote on that issue. It passed and every one with at least fifty-one or fifty-two percent. There were only four precincts that did not meet the five-nines percentage. I think that is an indication of the good work that has been done by the professional staff and the support people. I think the community supports what we were, are trying to do to educate our children, and thank you.
Thank you. I also want to thank everybody in the whole Fort Zumwalt district who voted for Prop Four. It's going to do wonderful things for our district and our classrooms, and ultimately our students, that definitely needed to be done and be improved on. Thank you, everyone who came tonight and shared their opinions, everyone who's here just for support. As Orville said, nobody sitting up here, nobody sitting here condones any of that behavior or wants any of that, just as none of our teachers do, or anybody I've ever talked to in this district that I've grown up in. We are working on it. Just because we don't have it as an agenda item does not mean it's not being worked on. I'm telling you right now, it is. It's taken very seriously, and it's stuff that we all talk about continually, and that we're putting things in motion to figure out what is the best course of action. So I just wanted to give you a quick update on that. Other than that, gentlemen, both of you, welcome to the board. Excited to have you here. Right, so I need a motion to go into closed section. Missouri Armus, or Art Asmo, six-ten, approval minutes for the March twenty-first meeting, and hiring, hiring, promotion of personnel. Mr. Callahan, can I get a second?
George.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
I just realized, oh boy. John, John, Callahan, Erica, Tommy, Jeff, and Gabriel.
Yes, yes.
We'll take about a ten-minute break.
So moved.
First, Callahan, second, George. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.